Meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee of the Hall to Order? Roll call, please.
Yeah, here.
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 Here, here.
We have a quorum. First item of business this morning is a discussion on the request for the sale of city-owned property. We'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Good morning, Andrew.
Morning, Your Honor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity this morning. Riveting conversation for 7:00 AM, so I'll keep it interesting. But over the last several years, as you all know, the city's received multiple requests to purchase city-owned properties. All of these requests have been different. And we've taken them on a case-by-case basis thus far. And by that, I mean they've started with different staff members. They've expressed the desire for different processes. And it's just become evident to us that we need to have a consistent policy for folks and a path that they can follow if they wish to make a request like that. We recently had two requests, and they were on like different ends of the spectrum, which was where it became very evident that if we're not careful in handling these things very consistently, we're going to start having fingers pointed at us or folks that feel like they were slighted. So hoping to start a discussion with you all this morning. You've been consistent over the last few years that offers on city-owned property should not be below market value and that they should be very public. And we have done that, but how we've gotten there has varied significantly. So just like I said, wanting to start this discussion about creating a policy, a couple of questions I think we should ask ourselves. Does the city even want to continue to entertain offers or sell city land? We've sold quite a few parcels over the last few years. Obviously, there's parcels that we can't move because of deed restrictions or park uses or things like that. But I guess a policy question is, is it good practice to sell land? We should discuss how a purchase price is established. You know, in the past, we've asked folks to pay for an appraisal to establish a value while if they're buying a small sliver of land and the value of the land is, you know, $5,000 to $10,000, by the time you fund an appraisal, it probably doesn't make sense to even have the discussion. So something to think about. And then how do we address public engagement in the land sale process? Should other interested parties have the ability to make an offer? So if neighbor one, you know, is the one that initiates the process and they have an interest in it, should neighbors on either side have the ability to, you know, have an interest or make an offer as well? I think our position has been yes, but we haven't defined how that would look or how that process may work. So hoping to start a discussion. If the council would rather have staff go out and do some research on how other cities are handling this, we're happy to do that. We'll develop a policy with your direction and bring that back for consideration. So we can either jump into a discussion now or you can send us back to do some work on this, and we're happy to do that legwork and then bring something back for discussion if you want to handle it that way as well. So that's where we're at. In your packet, and I don't know if Lynn has it on the screen or not, but there is a map that shows all of the city-owned properties. It's a significant number. Of course, that also, no problem. It's a hard-to-see map because there's so many properties. Of course, that map includes parks and things that probably never would be for sale, but just wanted you to see how many opportunities there may be for these types of requests and why a policy is probably necessary. So that's really the topic before us this morning, and however you guys want to proceed, we're good with that.
Yeah, thanks.
I think I'd like to have staff go out and see what other cities are doing and then come back.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
We can discuss it at that point.
Good place to start.
There's nothing urgent about this, so if we bring a policy back and we end up having to change 50% of it, that's fine, too. Certainly won't take offense to that because it's, I don't think there's a perfect playbook on this, so.
I do agree it's a good policy to have a uniform set of procedures that you engage in when anyone brings forward a proposal to sell land. Everyone feels like they're treated evenly, at least a starting point, knowing that every parcel will probably be slightly different. Scott, did you have a question or comment?
Could you just briefly give a differentiation between the properties that are Port Authority, under the Port Authority umbrella, and those that are not? Because we can sell property that's city-owned, but lots of times the question will be, well, if that's a Port Authority thing, that's kind of in a different category.
Yeah, yeah, so definitely different ownership and different rules, quite honestly, and practice, philosophy, mission, whatever. Generally, the city-owned properties are going to be things that may be in our ownership for future right-of-way purposes, park purposes, utility purposes. Though that's more likely, Port Authority properties are likely, have been acquired through a process that contemplates future redevelopment or land transactions. So I think it would be more common that there's sales of Port Authority-owned properties, certainly bigger sales or bigger parcels. But, you know, that's a separate governing body that has to make those decisions. Claire, do you want to add anything to that or the process that the port has been working with?
That's exactly right, and the process is very similar to the council process in terms of how many times it's in front of the body or how the sale is actually done legally. Although, Port Authority process is slightly faster because we only have to do one public session rather than two. So I think we'll have, in our policy, we should probably address the fact that port sales will be different.
And I think that it's contemplated that city transactions, city actions are more predicated on public opportunity, and by that I mean bid processes, quotes, offers, those things. Whereas the Port Authority has a little more flexibility to be able to work exclusively with a party. They have the ability to sell land below market value, some of those things, so. And I'm not saying the city doesn't, it's just, I think by design, it's contemplated that the Port Authority has more flexibility with transactions to enable growth and economic development and those things, whereas the city's lens is really that, you know, public opportunity and fairness.
Your Honor, I would think that, as you said, I mean, we could identify on the map, obviously, Port Authority land tends to be large chunks where the city owns a lot of kind of infill pieces. And I kind of think in some ways, if we're going to do this, it would be nice to highlight the ones that we would like to sell as opposed to, you know, the ones that we, you know, are not so keen on selling, as you say, like a park isn't for sale, so there's no point in having that even on the map.
Yeah, I think we could, I think we could demarcate properties that have deed restrictions so they can't be sold, and then park properties. I don't know if there's properties we want to sell, maybe that we're willing to sell would be, you know, more appropriate, but I think we can, I think we can take a stab at that through this process, identifying those things on a map in conjunction with the policy. You guys may disagree with.
I was second to Jim's motion.
Have staff direct something to bring back for us. Good discussion. Any further questions or comments? On favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. That gives you good direction, Andrew.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
All right, thanks. Next discussion is on food trucks, and we'll call on community development manager Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is the morning of policy and ordinance discussions about updates. We briefly, at our last council meeting, discussed bringing back a discussion of food truck ordinance. So that's what's before you today. You were hopefully able to review what our current food truck ordinance is. What staff is requesting is that we have a brief discussion this morning about some of the things that you'd maybe like to see in an update, and then staff can take those directions and work with local business owners, local food truck owners, to go over what that looks like in reality, and then come back to you guys with an updated ordinance for your review at a later date. So just some points to note, in our current ordinance, in our current ordinance, we restrict where food trucks are allowed to be, in the downtown area. We restrict them near schools. We also have other restrictions that in this day and age don't totally make sense anymore. We've built amenities downtown that are encouraging the hookup of food trucks to city utilities, so we should probably update some of that language. Feedback I've also received is that when food trucks are out and about, a lot of times they'll have a sandwich board with their menu on it. Right now, our ordinance doesn't allow for them to use any signage outside of their mobile unit. I think we should reconsider that and allow the usage of signs that are safely placed outside of the vehicle, but still allow for safe passage of people. What we're hoping that an update would also do was get us in compliance with what the state and the county does for permitting. Currently, Fergus Falls does not have a permitting process for food trucks. We would like to just ensure that we're having something in place that says, we know that you're a food truck that operates here, and we also understand that you are already permitted by the county, by the state, and that you're following all those rules that you're supposed to. So contemplating something like that in our ordinance. Maybe looking at a seasonal or and/or temporary fee schedule, just to make it fair when food trucks are hooking up to utilities. And, yeah, and again, adding the option for connection to utilities in an ordinance. So I will let you guys discuss a little bit about what else you think you'd like to see, and then I know that there are at least a couple interested parties in the audience this morning who have food trucks of their own and may have more to add to this discussion as well. Yeah, Brent.
I do, the one thing I saw in here earlier, what is the reasoning for them not being allowed near the schools?
I think the idea behind that, from what I understand, is that they didn't want kids running across streets to go patronize a food truck.
Okay, was this something that the school asked for, or?
That came, Your Honor, Councilmember Thompson, that came directly from Chief Bergeron. He had concerns that if, you know, dozens of kids were crossing Randolph or whatever, Freiburg, to go to a food truck that was set up, we're just asking for challenges at that busy time during the day, over the noon hour. So that's where that comes from.
Yeah, because I remember when I was in high school, I mean, you'd let out for lunch, and there'd be, the street was full. They were heading straight down to McDonald's, just down the street, you know, and which means there's a lot of kids that go out, and then if there's a food truck that can be within a safe distance, I wouldn't see a problem with it if it was where they didn't have to cross traffic or anything else.
And I don't know, Your Honor, if the school even has open lunch anymore, so.
Oh, they do? Okay, well, then that wouldn't.
That's back in the old days.
But we can.
I was working at that McDonald's.
I would think you should ask.
It was full.
We could reach out to the school district and just check in on that.
I was going to say, just check with the school.
Yeah.
So.
What's not working about the current system? I mean, the kind of the ordinance policy that we have, what doesn't work?
Just mostly those things that I highlighted. I think we should discuss the access of food trucks on Lincoln. I think things have maybe changed since 2016. I think the fact that we aren't allowing hookups to utilities is something we should definitely look at, and then just having a little bit more flexibility with when they are out, what their signage could look like.
Maybe it'd be a good time to ask Pat or Jenny if they'd like to contribute, not to put you on the spot, but I assume you're here to join us in this conversation.
I don't have much to say, but I could talk. Do I need to say who I am? Hi, Jenny Christensen. I'm with Penny Cakes. I'm a relatively new food truck in the area, dessert food truck specifically, so I have a little bit different needs than other food trucks. I don't have as many hookups, but I do still need a hookup to electricity. The thing that I find challenging technically with the downtown late-til-8 block party that we just had, essentially, I shouldn't have been there, you know, because that is right on Lincoln. It was not a city, it was only a special event, not a city event. So those are the kinds of challenges that we're running into. You know, it would be nice to be able to have food trucks there for special events, or if a, let's say, Danelynn and Burdock wants to have some kind of like open house and they want to have Penny Cakes, they want to have the food trucker or me out there to help sell some stuff and drive traffic in there. I think those are the things that we find challenging, and, you know, the hookup thing, and then also the signage. I know it's a little thing, but it's kind of, you know, I have my menu out there. It's a very small little A-frame that sits right outside, but it helps kind of bring people in and realize, oh, that's not just a trailer park there, that's an actual food truck. So those are, those are my concerns, at least.
Thanks, Jenny.
Yes.
Pat, welcome.
Pat's got a list, it looks like.
I don't have a list. Clara, did you get the email I sent you?
I did not.
Okay, so I'd sent an email to Clara a couple days ago that got lost in cyberspace. So I'll just really quickly recap.
Please do, Pat.
Some basic stuff. So Pat Conley from Dairyland in Fergus. We have a connection with the Joko's Food Truck. The reason I'm here today is just to cover what I've heard from other food trucks in the community and food trucks that aren't in the community that have been here, kind of feedback. And I had a chance to review the ordinance, I think it was last updated in 2016, or is revised from when it started back in 2008, the first discussion that we've had. In that timeframe, things have changed a lot, you think, pre-COVID, post-COVID, how things have been done. So just the basic notes that I came up with as we go through. Number one, for city staff, when we've talked, if I've been to Battle Lake to have a food truck operating, or if we go up to Detroit Lakes or other places, Pelican Rapids, you can see distinctly when you talk to the different staffs of the communities. Some councils have really thought through how to communicate to the food trucks, and other communities have said, here's a sheet of paper, read it and figure it out. And I think the more we can be proactive in making sure that when someone comes up front of City Hall and asks, how do I go about permitting? That it's not said, well, let me get the mayor, or let me get this person, that it's just clear and very easy to explain rather than sending that person down the road frustrated. So that would be my first point. Again, make it adaptable, as Clara had mentioned, that how we do business today, tomorrow's going to be totally different. In the ordinance, it reads that if you have a generator, for example, on your truck, that it should be enclosed or not to exceed 70 decibels. I don't know if anyone's ever measured that, but when we've been at downtown events, as Clara has mentioned, people may complain that that generator's running too loud, and there's an outlet that's 10 feet away from you that we can't tap into. So just that simplicity of seeing how does that work? And then if we do tap into that, into the electrical, there's been places that have said, we're going to charge you $25 for one event, we're going to charge you $15 for an event to tap in. Keeping it reasonable, if you tell someone that there's going to be two back-to-back events and it's $50, you got to sell 10 hamburgers to cover that cost really quick, and it's going to be a deterrent of whether someone wants to come in and operate the food truck in that spot, or. How many cookies you'd have to sell to recoup $25? You know, you're paying the city before you even make any money. With that said, to find balance, we've had businesses in town that, as the world has changed, has said, okay, we're a brick-and-mortar business, but there's an opportunity to do a food truck as well. We have franchises that are considering right now. McDonald's has a corporation, has an opportunity to look at expanding. Taco John's has talked about it. So if it's in discussion with franchises on how they're going to expand, because of the way the world is, I think we need to be mindful of that, that if there's brick-and-mortar businesses that are already paying taxes within the community, do we hit with another fee that would be on top of that? So finding that balance. So I had just heard some people say, and Clara, you had mentioned it earlier, about maybe doing it in a tiered situation. I think there's already been, for the pavilion, for example, there's been conversation about how to handle the, I want to call it the marketplace out by the museum. What do we call that?
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market. That if they're going to be there every, using the pavilion every Thursday rather than going out to the museum, do we want to be putting a weekly fee on them, or would it be, make more sense to have a seasonal fee? Whereas if someone from Detroit Lakes comes to town, or from Park Rapids in the area, if they're coming in for a one-time event, and they're not paying taxes, they're not part of the community, we want to welcome them. But at the same time, do we want to welcome them at the detriment to someone right across the street where we have Union Pizza carving it out every single day? And you have a guy that shows up from out of town and just has a gangbuster to hand here you sit. But without protecting that, at the same time, we do know that when people come to town, the overflow brings business into the community. I've heard Taco John say it many times, that when Taco Bell opened up, they were nervous for two weeks. After that, they realized that there's two businesses advertising for tacos in town. And then at that point, it's just, it's kind of the capitalist game that whoever's best at that does well. And if both people do great at serving customers, then the business grows. So we need to let businesses come into town and do those things because it's going to raise our community to higher standards. If we don't serve better, then someone else is going to figure out how to do it better. And I think the goal of the pavilion, of things like that in our community, is to make us look better, is what I heard at the last meeting. We're just enhancing what we've done in the last 20, 30, 40 years, but just making it better. Um, let's see. Thing is, when you talk too long and your phone times out, you lose your notes. Let me quick find what I've got here. And then Clara, you mentioned it last week when I was at the council meeting, maybe having a map that would say where food trucks can operate. And an idea that just came to mind when I was paddleboarding yesterday, where BJ's used to sit, if that's city-owned property in a parking lot that's not being used, would that be an opportunity for someone to tap into? Are there other places in town that, as Fergus has changed in the last 10 years, should we be using those as opportunities for? That would be a spot for a farmer's market almost on a corner. As we're thinking those things through, so that if someone comes in and we're not prepared for that question, that we don't get that blank look from the city staff saying, I don't know? Because it's, things have changed drastically since prior to COVID. So that's everything I came out. The last thing I came up with is that, having served in council in the past, I know what it's like when we're being cautious and we want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is and do all of that correctly. But at the same time, I would hope that as we work through these things, that we make the shift to, as we're embracing the change in the town, that we show that excitement, that we have ways to really show that, hey, we're excited about these things. So if maybe even moratorium for the first couple of years on fees, for example, to get people out, to get them doing these things so that it's not prohibitive. You look at our younger generation that's coming up, they know how to operate this and operate all their technology into a business that we can't even imagine. And that if we can look at ways that downtown is thriving with the pavilion that's going on, ways to make it exciting, ways to embrace it so that when there's something there, you know, if there's a budget to put an advertising billboard for Shop in Fergus Day in Fergus that we're part of, maybe there's ways where we look at saying, okay, there's ways that we feature the excitement that's going downtown. So just a shift in how we do our advertising and spending might be something to consider, too.
Sure. Thank you very much, Pat. For your questions. Comments? Anyone have any questions for Pat or for Jenny? All right, thanks. Scott, did you have a comment?
Comments? I didn't have any specific questions for them, but there were a couple of the things that Clara mentioned that I think it would be very helpful for the policy to, you know, review. You mentioned signage and the use of signage that's, you know, beyond the truck itself. And I think that in most cases, that would be fine to allow it. But there are times when that's a real problem because there's a crowded sidewalk or whatever. So I don't know how you get flexibility in that, but there probably needs to be a way that we can not allow it under certain circumstances. I'm not sure how to provide for that, but it seems like there ought to be some way for us to either have it or not and have some discretion on that. Seating was another question. If you've got an event where there's lots of room and the operator wants to provide a picnic table or two, I think that should be okay. But again, if it's a situation where it's a crowded deal and we don't want it all jammed up, you know, there needs to be some way for whatever the event is doing to have some control over how the traffic flows and things like that. So that's a bit of a puzzlement, how to approach it. I think some of the points that Pat made as far as permitting are important, and the idea of having maybe a tiered structure for a one-day or a weekly or seasonal permitting is probably a good idea. And then how to rate that as far as the costs, we can take a look at that. Because there's going to be those who will come in for a one-day thing and you never see them again. And there'll be those who will be at every event because they're here, you know, all the time. And I think that having a way to have a seasonal permit would make it easier for us, easier for you guys, and it would just be a better way to go. I think that's a good idea that, to have a seasonal option. One of the finer points had to do with things like generators and whether you can have music playing and sound and things like that. And to just say you can't do it doesn't really work for the ice cream truck roaming through the neighborhood, where the whole point is you have to hear it, you know, if you're going to be successful in that particular one. And I don't think anybody really minds that one. I think what the point of the ordinance was to, you know, having something sitting in one spot blaring overly loud and being a problem. And so how we would address that, I think, needs to be a little clearer. And you already mentioned things as far as utilities. We'll have to have a very clear policy as far as the rating, the rates for what it costs, so that, as Pat said, it's clear. So if someone comes and they get a permit for something, it includes this or it doesn't include that, whether it's water, sewer, or electric, and whether there's any kind of breakdown for those various utilities. There's a lot.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments? Does that give you some guidance?
I would say Clara comes back with a draft.
I think so. I think it sounds like it's not that far away, input of the business owners, the ones that are operating these trucks. Sounds like you can come back with something that's manageable, and we can continue the discussion and end up where we need to be. Everybody good? All right. Thank you, Clara. Thanks, Pat and Jenny, for being here this morning. Item number three is Stanton Avenue Reconstruction Improvement Project, and we'll call on Brian Ubaro. Good morning, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and members. The reconstruction of Stanton Avenue, we're looking from the project limits from Union Avenue to Broadway Avenue. I do have a map to show the preliminary project limits. This has been on the horizon. This has been on the horizon because a recent developer for the old flower mill has reached out in coordination with the city. The existing condition of this street is in poor condition, and it's also listed on the city's capital improvement plan. Therefore, I requested a preliminary proposal from more engineering to start the preliminary engineering report and design. As we know, the existing street in this area is very poor. Much of that, we believe, is attributed to the underlying soils. In fact, the interceptor sewer that was constructed in the late 80s, early 90s is constructed on pilings, rather, a very improved type of design. So if acceptable, more engineering, we would start the preliminary design, we'll review the existing utilities and come back with recommendations. But also, in discussions I've had with the developer, the flower mill parking needs are also a desire in their overall design and how this, how the city's project could accommodate their project as well. So we've made those discussions, and we will be reaching out to them for future to talk about their access needs, in addition to what the city needs are as well, and other area providers there, such as Service Foods and other business operators. We haven't established a budget for this project yet, but listing potential funding sources might be municipal state aid. It is on a state aid route, that would be potentially for the street portion of the project. We also have the enterprise funds, and we might look to do special assessments or a combination of thereof. So if acceptable, or any questions, is what I'm requesting at this time is a resolution, a few things here, resolution initiating public improvements tonight, 5350, 7215, 8230. I'm also requesting to combine these PIs I just listed into CP 5959, which is a Stanton Avenue Reconstruction Project. I'm also requesting a resolution ordering the preliminary engineering report for 5959, and also accepting more engineering professional services proposal in the amount of $32,166. I don't have the schedule for this project, but in discussions with the developer, their desire is to start this project contingent on their progress as early as next year. However, that will be coming in further discussions, how it fits their needs and proposals. Your Honor, I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Are we able to do that with one motion?
I think we can move it to the council with one motion, yes. Would you like to make that? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Just one question. You mentioned, because I know I've heard for 15 years that the underlying soils are the reasons, as you mentioned, for the poor condition of Stanton, but you feel like that's can be overcome through engineering if the street's reconstructed? That it's not something we're going to reconstruct and then two years later have it be falling apart again?
No, no, Your Honor, very good question. No, I anticipate we're going to be doing some soil sampling and everything, and whatever that soils report based on. that soils report based on the bearing pressure of that soil could consist of a lot of overexcavation to remove the unsuitable material to replace with suitable material or geotextiles. Anything we need to increase, get the bearing strength of a nine-ton road design is what we're going to be desiring.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Brian. Nothing an engineer can't overcome, right? Scott?
They had to do that kind of work over here at the pavilion. They had to really dig quite deep and take out a lot of fill and stuff, as I recall.
Very good point, yes. We went upwards of 30 feet downward, excuse me, to correct some of the unconsolidated debris down there so we could have a stable foundation for any subsidence. So it's not until common, if I may add, you know, we, 2016 in Cascade Street, new to the library, we did something very similar, however, that was on the county's conjunction with the county project. But we went up to, excuse me, downward up 14 feet to remove a lot of unsuitable material to have a strong base for longevity of the road itself.
One additional comment, as you were going through the options for funding for this, I believe that this three-block stretch is expected to be a link in the trail system? So there'd possibly be some trail grant funding or some pocket we can tap into regarding the trail monies? Would that be added to the list for where we might come up with some money on this?
Well, Councilman Kwame, that's a very good point. In past applications, I think, to the greater Minnesota Parks and Trails with the connection of the regional trail from Union to the former dairy, a lot of those showed an on-street facility. We have not been successful on some of those applications. So it will be a good time and I anticipate coming back once we get to the final, more into the final design of the geometric road, the parking lot needs and everything. I feel there's going to be an amendment for the trail to talk about what is the alignment of it, how we view the trail actually reaching the former dairy site for the long-range plan. So something to come. But if the council would desire, I can talk with more engineering to start. We don't have very limited options, but I'm not sure what the council's desire is and how they view that trail, either on-street, off-street, or what have you.
Well, since it's so much private property right along the river there, even though we might like it to go along the river, that opens up a real conundrum, I think.
Potentially.
But maybe it's possible. I guess we'll see.
It's something that we've talked about from the dairy property perspective. If you can see in the bottom left-hand corner of the map, you know, there is some land there and then there would be, and then it goes on to the railway again. And it might be something that we're going to talk to the railroad about that, as whether that's a possibility to go that way and come in more like outstate and through Kevin Bartram's rather than going on the road.
Ongoing discussion there, I think. But I think it's something we need to keep in mind, like you said, there is private property there, so.
It is, it is a very important thing. It's something we do need to figure out and how that's going to complement that area and how we get to that passage.
Do we have a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night? Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you. Brian? Again, Brian Uvalo with Public Improvement 9351, the ILS replacement project.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Yep, we've got a lot going on at the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport. This would be, if approved, another fourth project we do have in the hopper. So right now, we're looking at the instrument landing system, often referred to Ackerman ILS. This needs to be replaced. It's becoming obsolete. A lot of replacement parts are unavailable in many instances. And I've also attached a letter from MNDOT Air Knox Director talking about the need to city replace this project through passport sponsors. And they've indicated that this Fergus Falls Municipal Airport ILS system is possibly the second oldest, if not the oldest, in the state. So therefore, based on their funding needs, they're requesting that we proceed with this project. This is very similar to another project we have going on, which is AWAS system. We're looking for city's portion of work would be construction of the foundation system, power needs and everything, basically all the subsurface needs for the MNDOT to install their equipment, the new ILS system on top of. This would be a coordinated effort. In fact, MNDOT has the equipment procured and they're anticipating delivery in late this fall. So it's something time is of the essence for us to proceed with this project. Therefore, I talked to SEH, they provided a proposal to do this work, final design and coordination work. These fees are eligible through, once again, the state airport grant program. We've been in discussions with them based on the current deadlines we do have with the state, but they've, they're working to accommodate with us. So at this time, I'm requesting to initiate public improvement 9351, the instrument landing system replacement project and a resolution accepting SEH's professional services proposal for design in amount of $79,500.
Thank you, Brian. We can bring this to the council with the motion?
Off, your honor.
Thanks, Justin.
Second.
Thanks, Krista. Questions for Brian? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. All right, now that we got the ILS out of the way, it's time to move on to the GSR. I think we can do this PDQ ASAP.
Not by design, but thank you, your honor. In the past, we Interstate Engineering back in 1993 and also recently as 2018 produced reports by KLM, they did some evaluation on basically the entire city-owned water storage facilities. If you recall, recently, we just completed the one and a half million gallon ground storage tank referred to as GSR. That was completed recently. The next phase was to address the, another groundwater storage tank that's located just north of the plant that's referred to as the 750,000 gallon GSR. This project is included also in the city CIP for this upcoming year. So just a little bit of history about this. This 750,000 gallon GSR tank that we're referring to, it was constructed in 1914. A lot of things have changed since then. The 1993 report by Interstate and also the report recently from KLM in 2018 recommended the demolition and replacement of this storage facility because it's at the end of its useful life. Because of this, I solicited a proposal from Interstate Engineering and their subcontractor, Apex Engineering, to evaluate this storage tank. Initially, we were, the plan was to follow those reports and do a demolition and replacement. However, I figured it's best to do a more holistic approach and we need to look at this in another fashion. And I've listed it and I'm going to say, the three things that we're talking, referring to, I'm referring to is, number one, is this new storage water reservoir needed? Or can the water treatment plant be modified to accommodate your storage needs? And then if it is needed, should this new tank be constructed in the same location? Or is there other places citywide that would benefit not only the, our fire full system needs or not to mention pressure? However, to answer these questions, there's going to be a little bit more due diligence done. And with the soliciting Interstate Engineering Apex, we proposing doing a citywide distribution model. This is a digital model to address our, to look at our distribution system citywide. This will not only hopefully answer questions in regards to the ground service tank, it will also provide insight to other system deficiencies and also the ability for, to accommodate larger exterior growth through the city, whatever that may be. Also want to note to see, does have a GIS system. We've inventoried a lot of our water main distribution system, which is very valuable digital information that will help with this stormwater, or excuse me, stormwater, this water distribution model. So at this time is what I'm going to be requesting is to, what is in my notes here? Is to initiate public improvement 8232, which is a 750,000 gallon GSR replacement project and then accept Interstate Engineering's professional services proposal in the amount of $95,000 to complete this analysis. We anticipate, your honor, that we should have this analysis based on all of the information we have. It could be completed as early as fall. There will be, once the mallas, there'll be some field calibration and to, like I mentioned, to calibrate the existing model to check the accuracy of what this program is producing. So at this time, I'll just answer it. Open up for any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions for Brian? Someone like to make a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night?
So am I.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Scott.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
The State Public Facilities Authority, you mentioned that there's been an application submitted to them regarding funding. What kinds of options have we got with them? I don't, I'm not familiar with what they offer or what we might, you know, go to them for. How does that involve, or how are we involved with that?
The PFA Public Funds Authority is funded program through the state. A lot of communities haven't taken advantage of this program. They're basically low-interest loans based on median income. I listed it here because the deadline was there. We did submit an application. It's just an application. If the terms, if we are selected with this and we do need to go to a rate for replacing this, it could be an option for the city. However, we have done in the past, based on my recollection, mid-years, has been, been some benefit, but in fact, we have had some PFA loans that we've actually refinanced to as well. But a lot of communities take advantage of this as a potential option.
Thanks, Brian. Scott, any other questions? Have a motion to bring this to the council? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
TY, Brian, thank you. Next up on the, last item on the agenda is a discussion of the Idotel County EDA. We'll call on Nick Leonard from the Idotel County. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, your honor, council members. In your packet, there's a resolution for your consideration where the city of Fergus Falls could elect to participate in the countywide EDA several years ago, per statute 469 is referenced here. The county board established the EDA, which we refer to as the CDA. And specifically, you know, for the past several years, there really hasn't been a need to go from community to community to see if you want formally participate because we haven't utilized, we don't have a levy, we don't utilize a levy. But we're about ready to roll out ARP funds, specifically about $5 million focused heavily on housing, market rate housing. And we all know about the workforce challenges that we're experiencing throughout the region and throughout the state. And so specifically focused on workforce with a heavy emphasis on healthcare, long-term care facilities, working closely with M-State to develop kind of, continue to develop a line of long-term care support. And so one of the reasons I'm here today is because in order for us to be able to support businesses or housing projects within Fergus Falls, the city of Fergus Falls, the city has to elect to participate. And so one of the things we're doing is, before we would spend any dollars in your community, the city has to first and foremost elect to be part of that. So, and I want to just add two other things and then would be happy to answer your questions. First of all, the CDA is, from the beginning, it's a nine-member board. Seven of those individuals are community members throughout the county, two of them by statute are county commissioners. Locally, your representatives are Jeff Ackerson and Commissioner Lee Rognes are the two local individuals who sit on that, that Community Development Agency Board. From the beginning, the goal has always been to be supportive and additive. What is good for Fergus Falls is not necessarily right or good for Fergus. And so I think, I think there's been a, we have a good working relationship with your staff. We let the city of Fergus Falls drive what is the priority, what are the priority projects? And when it's appropriate and when we're requested, we're happy to support those. I, secondarily, and I think a concern that I would have if I were in your seat is, well, you know, are there strings attached? And the short answer is no. There is no EDA levy, there's no intention of having an EDA levy. If this is going to be funded, that is, if we're going to utilize, put funds into Fergus Falls, it's going to come through funds like this, like the ARP or general levy dollars via the county. So there isn't an economic development levy countywide. And so those would be the two kind of things that I'd want to highlight for you as council members. With that, I'll see if you have any questions.
So, thanks, Nick. Question you brought up, so if you're sitting in our seats, your concern would be that levy, right? Like an additional levy that this could potentially allow? And as you mentioned, there's no intended levy, but is there any, is there any guarantee for the council that, I mean, obviously, because this would allow the county the authority to in the future levy if they wanted? Is that accurate?
If, if a year from now, and the county said, hey, you know what, we think we should flip the switch and do an EDA levy? In theory, yes. Here's the problem with that. We have 62 townships in 22 cities. We would have to get resolutions in 62 townships and 22 cities to fully maximize and benefit from that levy. It isn't practical, right? If the county decides that, hey, we want to generate more revenue for this, the practical way is, and which we've done today, is to simply do it via the general levy, right? Because it's covering all communities, all townships, so you're not piecemealing it and basically pulling from a very small, a much smaller piece of the pie, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't completely understand, like, so thank you for that. And so you mentioned the 62 townships and 22 cities. This, obviously, the city of Fergus Falls would authorize the EDA or the CDA to operate within the city limits of Fergus Falls, as I understand. Does that give the county the ability then technically to levy solely on that, in that jurisdiction? Or does it have to be, like, does a CDA or EDA levy have to be countywide?
It would have to be with any participating entity, right? So, so let's say there's 12 cities. Let's say, I think, I think we've roughly, roughly 10 to 12 different communities have passed or are in the process of passing this resolution, right? Those would be the only communities that would be levied by this EDA levy. And so my point is, that's not a very big piece of the overall pie when you think about from a county standpoint, when we have townships, like we have townships in the northwest section of the county that have a tax capacity, townships that have a tax capacity four times the city of Purham, right? When you think of the volume that Purham has, my point is, that isn't a, that would be a good way for a lot of our commissioners to lose their job pretty quickly if they established an EDA with only 12, an EDA levy with only 12 communities.
Sure. That makes sense. I understand more completely now. Yeah, Jim?
You're talking about $5 million. You split that 22 ways, that isn't a heck of a lot of money for each town.
Your honor, council member Fish, that's correct. So in this particular pot of funds, you're right, we've got about $5 million that we're going to focus on workforce and housing. And other funds would be via general levy or other pots of dollars that are eligible to be used in the city of Fergus Falls.
But we already have our own HRA that has been doing a fine job for us. Will you, will you work side by side with them? Or are you eventually going to run them out of business? Or how is that going to work?
Your honor, council member, you're absolutely correct. And the intent would not be to compete with at all the current HRA. So the HRA focuses on affordable housing. These dollars will not be utilized for affordable housing. It'll be used for housing projects, market rate housing projects, and workforce housing. So it won't be competing at all with the projects that your HRA is focused on.
Question, so if the city decided to enter into, it's just an agreement to participate in the EDA, or whatever that agreement is, is that a, is that an open-ended agreement? Or how does that, how does that work?
Per statute, the city can elect to opt out of that. And specifically, I've got the statute here because I anticipated that might be a question. The withdrawal election may be made every fifth, so this is per, your honor, 469, 1082, subdivision five. You may elect to withdraw every fifth year following adoption of the resolution, electing participation. So the withdrawal election is effective on the anniversary date of the original resolution, provided notice is given to the County Economic Development Authority, not less than 90 nor more than 180 days of the anniversary.
It's like a five-year agreement, basically? Anthony?
So of the $5 million, then, what's the anticipation that would come to Fergus?
Well, again, your honor, council members, we would work closely with the community to determine what are the projects that are of priority to you. to determine what are the projects that are of, of priority to you versus us driving this is, this is the project that we should be working on. And so it's not allocated so much per community, but it's project-driven.
Alright, so Scott, you have a question?
Besides the handing out of, or allocating of funding for various things, my question has more to do with, you know, policy and the rules and regulations that come along with whatever, you know, might be dictated by the county to the city in one form or another. Can you address that question at all? You know, to what degree does, do we end up being under the authority of the Otter Tail and any decision that we'd like to make locally?
Your honor, council members, there wouldn't be any, I think the question is, what types of strings are attached from a county perspective? If dollars come via the county's A R P dollars to the city for a project?
Whether or not there were dollars involved, I guess, just what other kinds of restrictions might there be?
There, there really aren't, there are no restrictions. It's simply a matter of, do you elect to participate or not? And so it's, it's, we can't fund, we as a county staff will always have good working relationships with your staff and continue to support, just as county staff, that will always be a priority. But we can't invest dollars in the city of Fergus Falls or any city or any township unless that authority, which is you, has authorized us to do so.
Question, that's just from this particular fund?
Your honor, council member Hicks, can you clarify, that's just from this?
I mean, obviously, because you're, you're talking specifically about these A R P funds, but obviously from the general levy, you collect dollars. I mean, those could be invested in the community?
Your, your honor, council member Hicks, no. If dollars are coming via the Community Development Agency or via the Economic Development Authority, they can invest dollars in your community unless you've given them or enacted, you know, provided, given them the authority to act within your community.
So I, is this, my last question is, is, is this a standard, where did this, where did the language in the agreement come from? And is it, is it, so we have a wonderful relationship with Otter Tail County. You, I think you can sense, I can sense and I feel, just making sure that, that we continue like the, the authority to make our own local decisions as much as possible. Same, same relationship we have with the state, obviously. Anytime you go up in size in government, you risk, you know, the local control. That's, that's obviously, I think, the, the concern here for us. And is there any opportunities within language here to just make sure as we consider this, that those considerations are taken into account? Does that, that makes sense, I think, doesn't it, Nick?
Your honor, council members, I absolutely agree. The intent of this really is, I don't, I don't know that this changes our working relationship in any way, shape or form. In fact, if there weren't dollars involved, right, I, I don't know that it would be necessary because we certainly as staff have the flexibility and the, and are directed to work closely with all of our communities. But I think, and so, so I respect your question in that. I, I would be concerned that is the county coming in and saying, we want to tell you how to run, you know, how Clara to do her job? That isn't the intent. It's simply, if Clara says, hey, I have a project, that there's a developer wanting to do this market rate housing project, and I think it would be great, or we need dollars to look at how we can develop this particular area of land into market rate housing, which, which, again, not to compete with the affordable housing side of things in any way, shape or form, then we need to know that we have the permission of the council to be able to do that and invest those dollars. But in terms of telling you what you should be doing or how you should be doing it, that isn't the intent of this resolution. And so to your question, if there's a way we can, this is the standard resolution that is going around every city and every township that's interested in participating. But if there's a way we can clarify that for you, I'm happy to try to do that.
Sure. So maybe it makes sense to continue this discussion, to move this to Monday night and then get some staff input if that's appropriate?
Yeah, the question I have, and I don't know if it's a question for Nick or if it's a question for the city and county attorneys, but could we amend this resolution to state that the city's authorizing of the E D A to operate within the city is granted through this resolution, but we do not consent to levy within our jurisdiction by this action? I know statute indicates that, you know, this resolution is necessary for that, but is there a way to distinguish and make sure that we're not consenting to an additional levy? I think that's the biggest concern of the city. And, and like Nick mentioned, it's a five-year commitment and there's no telling what, you know, the, I, I think Nick's statements are, are well-intentioned and I think he's sincere, but there's no telling what the governing boards makeup will be or what they may do. And so I think as we look out for the taxpayers of Fergus Falls and, and ensure that there's no additional levies in place, you know, I think that's the biggest concern. Is there a way to overcome that and still, you know, work hand in hand with the E D A or C D A within our boundaries and, and give folks in Fergus Falls the ability to access these funds? I guess that would be the question I have. I don't know, Nick, if you have any response to that or if we need to get legal advice on that or how we want to approach that, but.
Your honor, council members, especially when the attorney's not in the room, my, my suggestion is always, let's just do it and they'll tell if it's wrong. We just, we just, it's very easy to just add that to the, to the, to the, to the resolution. Certainly from our standpoint, like I said, that, that isn't the intent. So if that, if that adds reassurance to the city council, whether somebody down the road says, well, statute overrides your legal interpretation, I guess, but we can certainly look into it and see if that would be.
I think we could because of that. I mean, that's my concern is that, you know, I, I see it a little bit like, is this the thin edge of the wedge? You know, that the county takes this little bit and now, you know, the county has an economic development. So why do, why do we fund greater Fergus Falls? You know, we, Fergus Falls has a H R A. You know, the county basically took their portion of H R A out of the H R A and made that into community development. And now the H R A within the county has changed quite a lot. And, and that would be my concern is that I, I appreciate the, you know, you, you can sit there with all, obviously with good intent, but who, who knows, as you say, you know, elections are fickle and we can get a change of county commissioners and people get new jobs and move on. And then all of a sudden, we've got a different profile of kind of personnel at the county. And even though we can Google back to this meeting on YouTube and say what Nick Leonard said, absolutely no way are they going to do it. As you say, that's, doesn't bear any, anything in court. So I, I think, you know, I think we can put some language in like Andrew's suggesting. I think that's a, a good thing. But I, you know, I think we're, we're here to represent the people of Fergus Falls and, and you're here representing the county and we are a significant part of the county. So I, I actually feel that, I feel slighted in some ways that, you know, to access this money, we have to have an agreement. I think, you know, this money was given by the federal government, you know, to stimulate things post the pandemic and we're having to give something to get something when it's kind of should be our money per, per rata basis anyway. So I think it's a, it's not a comfortable feeling.
Thanks, Anthony. So someone like to move this for further discussion to the council with some of these, you know, bring it to the city attorney?
I mean, I'll make a motion maybe to the council.
Anthony, thanks, Krista. Jim?
It, it, it just seems like the higher up that you get in government, the less gets done. And I mean, I, I like our local H R A and what they've been doing. And like Anthony said, that money was given to the county. We shouldn't have to join the county to get our portion of.
We're a pretty significant member of the county.
It's just, it, the further on up you go, the, the smaller we are. And I, I like the local authority that we have.
Well, maybe there's a way to have a discussion and amend this agreement so that we can continue that. I feel like I understand what you're saying. I feel the same way. Want to make sure that we maintain our sovereignty as a city. So there's a motion to, yes, Scott?
Just another comment. Is there some, oh, maybe a deadline? I don't know if that's the right term, that you're looking to get all of the cities that are either going to participate or not, you're wanting to have this kind of done by a certain timeframe? Or would we have the option to delay acting on this for months, years? I mean, could we opt in at some point next year, two years from now, or just not at all? Or does this have to be done by a certain date?
Your honor, council members, there's no, there's no urgency to this. The only urgency is that we've tried to put together a, a A R P program that does reinvest, to, to, to council member Hicks's point, in the things that are important to this particular region. And so that would be the only urgency is, but no, if in, if in six months, you decide, hey, now is the right time, then that's the right time.
Yes, the point I'd make that way is, we don't have anything that we're currently working on that we would need this to be able to, you know, go forward with something else that I'm aware of. And so it's like, well, if we don't need to do this, why bother? It doesn't seem that there's enough of an advantage to this to, you know, be an incentive for us to hop on board right now. I don't see that this is a real gain for the city at this point. As you said, we've already got a terrific working relationship with the county and I don't see any reason why that would change. So I don't see that this adds anything and does us, you know, any real good in the short run. And if we can wait to, till we've got something on the schedule that says, you know, if we had this agreement, it would help, well, then we can take a look at it. But as it is right now, I, I don't see any real urgency to hop on board.
Thank you, Scott. So we have a, yes, Brent?
Well, right off the bat, I agree with Andrew a hundred percent on this. I kind of talked to him about this before, about my concerns. And, and as far as the makeup is changing, whether I'm right or wrong on this, because of the redrawing of the district lines, aren't every county commissioner up for election this year?
Your honor, councilman, councilman Thompson, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, so this, this makeup could, could change quite a bit. And, and then I'd like to know if Mr. Olson has anything to say on this matter right now.
Good morning, your honor. Good morning, council. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for the opportunity. I guess I echo the concerns brought up by council members about what happens longer term here. I think if we look a little bit at, at the levies and we talk about how the, the current levy is operating, one of the finer points maybe to, to how funding is currently being collected for the county E D A is, is through the county H R A. And for those of you who receive a, a tax statement in the county, you very likely have seen the levy increase dramatically over the last couple of years since its creation. So I guess for, for what my opinion is worth, I guess I, I would disagree a little bit. There, there is currently a county E D A levy. It just is occurring through the county H R A. So splitting hairs perhaps, but it's there. I tend to agree. Again, I, I think we've got a very good working relationship and I think we're putting in a great deal of effort in Fergus Falls. And I certainly would, would hate to see any erosion of programming or, or watering down of programming within Fergus Falls. We've, we've developed good programming. We're, we're providing assistance to a lot of folks in town. We're, we're working every day to try and grow that programming in Fergus Falls. And I think it's important that, that, you know, the people in Fergus Falls, in my belief, know what's best for Fergus Falls. I think the point was made that the, the further up you go in government, the, the less control you have and the less focus you have. And so I think it's, it's important that Fergus Falls Council, Fergus Falls agencies have that local control. So thank you.
Sounds like we've had a lot of good discussion. We do have a motion to bring this to council Monday night. And in that motion, we're going to have some legal opportunity for some legal input as, as far as if we can change the wording of the, the resolution that's before us this morning. So all in favor of the motion to move this to Monday night, say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion's carried. There's no additional items that I believe. Announcements on, on June twentieth, most city offices will be closed observation Juneteenth holiday. June twenty-first will be our council meeting at five thirty here in the city council chambers. And then June thirtieth, reminder from four to eight, city of Fergus Falls, one hundred and fiftieth birthday at the river, riverfront pavilion. Means a drink.